It's okay. Let me know when we're open, Michael.
Madam President, I'm admitting everyone to the meeting right now.
Okay, great.
And Michael, if we can put the agenda up, that would be great.
Yes ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one. It's the regular board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. The time is five thirty-five P. M. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Moving on to one point oh-two, roll call.
Trustee Benz. And here, trustee Eckes.
Here.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, here.
Justee LaFrance.
LaFrance, present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present. We have a form five-zero. Moving on to one point oh-three, pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please stand and place your right hand over your heart? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to section two, adoption of the agenda. Two point oh-one, proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in order of business. Mrs. LeVey, do we have any?
Madam President, we do. For item four point oh-one, public comment period for closed items, and eight point oh-one, public comment period for open session. We right now currently have execution N twenty-one-twenty that has expired, and we are now replacing with N zero-eight-twenty-one, which allows for deviation of board meetings.
Thank you, Mrs. LeVey. Do we have any others?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Two point oh-two, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Eckes, by motion.
I have a motion by trustee Eckes. Is there a second?
I second trustee LaFrance.
And I have a second by trustee LaFrance. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz. And five. Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, aye.
French.
LaFrance, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed five-zero. Moving on to section three, closed session declarations. We will be taking items two, three point oh-two, government code section five-four-nine-five-seven, public employee dismissal, discipline, release, appointment, reassignment, and three point oh-three, conference with legal counsel on OAH case two zero-two-one-zero-six-zero-zero-six-four. Okay, moving on to section four, public testimony before closed session. Public comment period is administered by state law and is appointed a meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting law do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well-being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and employees is top priority for the Adelanto Elementary School District, consistent with shelter-in-place orders. From the governor at San Bernardino County, board members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. This meeting is in compliance with Governor Executive Order N zero-eight-twenty-one, which replaces N twenty-nine-twenty, which allows for a deviation of teleconferencing rules required by the Brown Act. Likewise, in-person attendance at board meetings will not be permitted at this time. Any persons who wish to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only, only must complete and submit an A E S D speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda items. The board limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any requests for public comment?
Yes, Madam President. The board invites Lynette Caddely, president of ADTA.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so, good evening, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, cabinet, C S C A, A D T A, and parents. I hope you all had a restful summer. We're happy to be back with students, and we hope that we don't have to have, to be shut down again and be thrown into distance learning yet again. With that being said, I think that we really do need to take a look at what, all the things that we're doing to help prevent, to help prevent us from going that route and shutting down, utilizing the P P E that we have and that we have spent millions of dollars on. If we're allowing adults and students to go mask-free while they are outside, the missing component is we should be social distancing, as many other school districts that I've watched just this morning on the news featured for their campuses and how they're dealing with keeping COVID cases down. We should be allowing students to sit outside to eat in the fresh air, especially now that it's warm and not freezing cold. We should be purchasing water stations that will be permanent in our district and get out of that nineteenth and twentieth century. I know I've talked to Dr. Mitchell about that, so I know that he was game for that, and I hope we get that in. Get those old water fountains out. We should be doing as much as possible not to cause grouping for any events or any unnecessary people on campus or on campuses. We know that there are a lot of things that are out of our control, and we understand that when we were distance learning, and I'm talking about things like ordering items, getting supplies, and so forth to our A D T A members, you know, that was out of our control. But what I don't understand is that you had, all summer, you've known the date that we're going to start school, and you've known that we were coming back full-on, and yet we have back orders for curriculum, consumables, and supplies, and I'm talking even as simple as crayons. Brand-new computers that are sitting on the floors of classrooms that aren't put together. Every department is blaming every department that it's not on them to do it. What I think we need to be working on is better communication and getting ahead so that when teachers start the new year, we're ready with everything we need as far as our tools, our supplies, and our supplies that steer us, steer our teaching. We still have a lot of inconsistencies from school site to school site, and we do have a few admin that are putting the blame on the district, so I just want to let you know. I think that many, that may be another form of maybe just some miscommunication that needs to be worked out. I also want to mention that we really need to get moving on our independent study program and our virtual academy. We could be attracting more students with it. Also, I just want to let our teachers know that I've been assured that if you have more students in your class than you should, that those are being worked on and will be resolved soon. I know a lot of A D T A members were very worried about the beginning of the school year, and I'm happy to report that the first two days have gone relatively smooth for the majority of the sites. Our students have been pretty good about mask-wearing. They're not complaining about it. They're doing what they're supposed to do, to do. I think it's more so that adults are complaining more than the students. We're looking forward to continuing to have a smooth year and staying face-to-face with our students, but also looking to the district to go above and beyond what the CDC guidelines say or any mandates to protect us all, to prevent another shutdown. I think that should be our goal. Last thing, we really enjoyed the last speaker at our P D day, and her name escapes me. It was the last one that talked about the breathing. What was her name? Anyway.
Dr. Nikki Elliott.
Yes, Nikki Elliott. She was awesome. We got a lot of feedback. Teachers loved her. So I wanted to make sure I said that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Caddely.
Thank you, Ms. Caddely. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any others?
No other speakers for closed session, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we do not have a representative from C S C A at this time?
No, not at this time.
No?
No.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on to section five, recess to closed session. Can I get a motion to recess?
I motion Eckes.
I have a motion by trustee Eckes. Is there a second?
I second.
I have a second by trustee Hunter. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz. And five. Trustee Eckes.
Aye.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, aye.
Justee LaFrance.
LaFrance, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed five-zero. The time is five forty-five P. M. We are in closed session. Thank you.
Trustee Benz, here. Trustee Eckes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, here.
Justee LaFrance.
LaFrance, present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present. We have a form five-zero. Moving on to section seven oh-one, announcement of reportable actions taken in closed session. The board took action in closed session to accept final settlement agreement for O A A case number two zero-two-one-zero-six-zero-zero-six-four. It was moved by trustee Christina Benz and seconded by trustee Holly Eckes. The vote was five-zero. Moving on to section eight, public testimony for open session. Dr. Mitchell, do we? I will not read that. I think that I read the first one doing before closed session is basically saying the same thing. The only difference is that you can speak on items on the open agenda and non-agenda items. So, Dr. Mitchell, do we have any people wanting to address the board?
Yes, ma'am. The board recognizes Francisco Spagna. You may unmute yourself. Mr. Asuma, do you see Mr. Spagna on?
Dr. Mitchell, I don't see anyone with that name.
Okay, thank you so much. The board recognizes Jennifer Radar. She is not speaking as A D T A. Ms. Radar?
Yes, thank you. Hi. Okay, let me find my screen. Thank you. Good evening, all. Good evening, parents and board trustees. Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and dozens of parents and teachers, many of whom fear reprisal for their opinions. I'm speaking to you again tonight in strong opposition to the mask mandate issued for our children. Let me begin by thanking you wholeheartedly for lifting the protocol for masks to be worn outdoors. This is common sense and is a position embraced by every district I know in California, as well as the CDC. Whatever argument there may be in favor of mask-wearing for consenting adults simply does not uphold weight against a universal mandate for our children. We must consider our children as individuals and seriously consider the potential for psychological damage and stunted cognitive development that can, has, and will continue to result from masking our children. There will never be such a thing as zero-risk environment for our schools, but imposing a blanket restriction on our children for six hours a day, five days a week, is an egregious and alarming overstep when there is no data showing any causal relationship between mask-wearing and illness prevention in our schools. Before anyone counters that we would all want surgeons to wear masks in the O R, they are operating in a sterile environment. I think we can agree that our schools are less than sterile. Clean, we can expect. Disinfected, we can expect. Sterile, we cannot. The dangerous psychological aspect of masks for our children lies in the learned idea that our world and the people around us are inherently dangerous. This perspective can lead to long-lasting anxiety disorders and to limited and impaired social skills. We know that children use facial expressions to understand and interact with their world. Communication is the first key learned behavior, and since a huge percentage of communication is nonverbal, mask-wearing is a hindrance to this vital development at a time when it is most important. Furthermore, in a state where equity is considered a fundamental principle, I urge you to consider how inequitable a universal mask mandate is for our individual learners. For the child with A D H D, a mask is a hindrance and a distraction to the learning environment. For a child impacted with sensory issues, mask-wearing is a behavioral trigger. For the preteens struggling with depression, the mask is another way to disappear. To an anxious child, a mask induces fear. To an English-language learner, the mask is a barrier to communication. To a child coming from a trauma background, a mask can be a debilitating trigger. This is just the tip of a very large iceberg. If equity is the goal, a universal mask mandate simply does not fit the equation. Our children are not universal learners. They are individuals with individual needs that require individual consideration from the people who know them best and have been given the privilege and responsibility of advocating for their needs. That voice belongs only to the parents. I'm asking you again to make mask-wearing enclosed in school a matter of individual choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Radar. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any others?
Yes, ma'am. The board welcomes Vanessa Padilla. You may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell, I don't see Vanessa Padilla in the chat.
Got it. Thank you so much. The board welcomes Monica Cooper. You may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hello. My name, greetings, A S D school board, Dr. Mitchell, the A S D cabinet, and my A S D colleagues and friends. I always believe prevention is the best medicine. I try to get enough sleep. I drink my water. I get my yearly annual physicals, and I also take my flu shot when I need it. Sunday night, to be very honest with you, I was very worried. It was the night before first grade, and honestly, I was, had so many things going through my mind as I was laying next to my husband of thirty-nine years. As you know, he was, got a blessing of a liver transplant twelve years ago, and in my head, I kept thinking, should I quit my job? Should I stay home? How am I going to keep him safe? But then reality hit. I need my insurance, my two thousand two hundred dollar P P O that I have with A S D. And so, the other thing that drew me back is the kids. I miss the kids. I love their spirit and their heart, and it keeps me young. And then I started thinking about all these things. So Monday morning, I had first-day jitters, and I gave my husband a hug. I said a little prayer, and I said, God's going to take care of us because he has in the past, and he will take care of me. That day, when I got to school, I had so many things going through my mind, and I am so glad for our wonderful A D T A president, Lynette, because she shared with you during closed session many of the things that were dear to my heart. The pluses for me is the masking, also being vaccinated. I am so happy to have that. Also, I wanted, also, I'm hoping the board will approve our A M L L C, the contact tracing and the COVID testing because I think Delta is real, and we need to keep up with that. The other pluses that I'd like to say, the deltas I think we could change, maybe is staff meetings. I personally don't think twenty-eight teachers should be jammed into a room and with, with, for just staff meetings. Maybe we can make a modification. Maybe some of us could do it virtually somewhere else. The other things that I was thinking as of the things that we need to change, maybe social distancing, maybe a little bit, maybe poding, maybe the empathy piece, being aware of how other people are saving. One of the things in my life that I always think about is a serenity pair. God granting me this serenity to change the things I can, the courage to know the things I cannot change in the wisdom to know the difference. And I know all of you know what the differences are and to keep our community safe. I want to thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and for all of you to trying to keep us safe. I hope it continues. I don't want anybody to be sick, and that's pretty much what I wanted to say today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any others?
Yes, the board invites Lynette Caddely speaking on behalf of A D T A.
Good evening again, everyone. I spoke earlier, but there was one thing that I really wanted to mention that I forgot. If you haven't already heard, our district has hired a COVID tracing company called A M L L C, and I know they're going to be speaking about it tonight, and hopefully it's been approved. I'm very excited about having this company on our campuses for the staff and for the students. They're going to be responsible for contact tracing, for answering all of our exposure questions, notifying those that have been exposed, and they will be testing us onsite, which is awesome. I think this is a, and I'm not saying everybody's getting tested every day, just if you, if you've been in contact with someone, you know, then you, they're going to be onsite for us to be tested right there. We don't have to go to Kaiser or somewhere else. I think this is a great step in doing better than the minimum that is required of our district to do concerning COVID. Some of our leadership was able to meet the representatives from A M, and really, they can't start soon enough. We really need them on our campuses now. I'm also happy and proud to know that we are the only district who searched out a company like this and is actually implementing them. So thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Mitchell and your entire team.
Thank you, Ms. Caddely. Madam President, that concludes our comments.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and thank you, speakers. Okay, we'll move on to section nine, governing board members' reports and announcements. Let's see, we will start with trustee Hunter.
Thank you. I'm unmuting. Thank you so much, President Turner. I just wanted to, there's so much on my heart and on the agenda, my agenda for just where we are now, where we've been, and, you know, this journey that we're doing together. And I just want to say welcome back to our students, welcome back to our teachers, our staff, to the first day. I have an opportunity to see it from so many different perspectives and just to get a view through the eyes of my children, the three that came back over at George, and they have been so excited. They are just ready to learn. They're ready to socialize again. They're ready to talk to a teacher face-to-face. And, you know, I just, I come into agreement with so much of what I just heard of what I believe is just an amazing job that our teacher staff and our superintendent and this board is doing to keep our children safe and that they feel safe. They feel secure. They, they've learned some things over the last year. They, they're adhering to protocol, and it's like the little ones get it so much faster sometimes, and they're teaching us. So they've adapted, and, and I'm just really, really excited about that. And I wanted to just share that it was, on the first day of school, they were greeted by Ms. Lynn, their bus driver, and she was so excited to see the children, and her greeting was so amazing, and they just felt welcomed, and she just kind of built more excitement in them by the way that she greeted them at the bus stop and each and every one of them. And I was watching other parents and other children getting on, and, and it just built that excitement in them. They were so excited about getting on the bus. So I wanted to say that. And then I had an opportunity last week to attend the outreach and the backpack giveaway. Everything that was happening, you know, that the district was providing resources for parents and, and students before they were, you know, even coming back to school. And I just want to thank all of our staff. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for the vision and just getting behind what they're doing and supporting that because it was such a huge turnout. It was an outpouring of parents. Everyone was respectful. They were excited. The kids were there. We had so many resources that parents were thankful to receive. And I just thank Beth and Norma, and I think I'm saying her name right. It's Selia. I believe I got it right, for, you know, what they were doing, all of the volunteers. It was just really, really great to see our school, our district in action, you know, making it happen for our parents. And everyone was very thankful. And I was just amazed at the turnout this year. So I really enjoyed attending that. And then I also wanted to just say thank you again. You know, we, we sometimes talk about things, and then it may take a little while to implement, but I want to thank you, Dr. Mitchell, transportation, everyone that worked. And I, I can't even imagine what the process is. But I want to thank you, Dr. Mitchell, transportation, everyone that worked and I I can't even imagine what the process is. We were at a conference. You know, recently, and we did hear a presentation, trustee Turner and I were listening to a presentation on transportation. That had us look at it a different way. And so when I see that big picture and I look at what our district is doing. To get our kids to school safely, to provide transportation. And then this year, expanding those bus stops that would provide more. You know, diversity and inclusiveness for our students that are residents in the neighborhoods and getting them, you know, more access. Just making it more accessible for all of our students to get to school. And it was just that, to me, was just amazing that it it got done just like that. You know, it the thought went for, and I remember trustee Love French. Asking and presenting that and it was on all of our hearts, I believe, to see that happen. And then just to see it manifest and come into full operation. That was just great. So I was thankful for that. And I guess lastly, just keeping it safe. I look at our district. I was in a, you know, speaking to a parent from another district. And she was like, I'm pulling my kids because they've only been back a week. And already somebody is sick and now they're exposed and I'm taking them out. And I look at the measures that we're taking. This board is so committed to keeping our our little ones safe. And that is our heart. And so I'm just thankful, I'm grateful, you know, for all the things that are happening, but that we're doing it safely. So with that, I just want to say thank you. Welcome back. It is awesome and excited and I'm thankful for each and every one of you.
Thank you, trustee Hunter. Trustee Benz.
Had to make make sure that I was was not mute. First thing I want to say, well, welcome back to Ev, everyone. I know you've had two two days on. I've been on since last last month. My kids have been in since July nineteen nineteenth and the first two weeks, it's all processing. How we've had to change it to implement the COVID COVID policies. And I am just so glad to be back back in the classroom. I'm so grateful. That I have kids that want to be there, that are trying their hardest. And I'm real, real, really excited excited for our teachers because I think you're going to have kids that really want to be there. That didn't like the Zoom. I didn't like this one. I want to thank our our teachers' commitment commitment to our kids, you know. Because I know you've had you have to take on more because of the pro protocol. You've got way more responsibilities as well as of other staff, the office. Proctors, everybody now has much more that they have to watch out for and do. And I want to thank you for take taking it on. We really, I'm so excited to see the direction that our district will go in. I do believe that we are like a hidden hidden gem and and we're going to shine. We're going to shine through this together because it's it's for the kids, you know, it's always been for the kids. But I'm just saying, I just want to say, please enjoy your kids in the class, teachers, you know, tend to. Because I have my kids in the class. I'm really excited. So, you know, it just reiterates how much I love my my job. So have fun and take take care, be be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee Akis.
Yes, I just real quickly just wanted to welcome everybody back. And I'm happy that school is open and we're trying to get back to normal. I visited our summer schools and it was wonderful. So I knew we would be ready to come back strong. That was a really great experience and to see the kids and everybody so happy, it was just amazing. I just real quickly wanted to mention that again, I want everybody to do your research on the vaccines, on the masks. I know we're getting lots of information. A lot of it doesn't make sense. A lot of it counter dicks itself. I mean, I could go on and on. I've been doing my own research for a long time. I'm spending lots of time looking into this whole thing. Trying to figure it out just like everybody else. And I am very compassionate with both sides of this issue. I'm not going to waste a lot of time talking about it, but I just want everybody to know that you. If you, I as a Christian, do believe in faith and I use my faith over fear. And I know everybody is in fear. You can feel it. You can you can just sense it. And it's sad that we're so worried and so fearful of dying that we're not living. And that that hurts. It's scary to me. I want people to be happy. I want you to be content. I know there's a lot of fear out there, but I know it's also generated through the media, the news. I personally have stopped watching the news this last year and I can't tell you what peace I have after doing that. Because I couldn't take all the negative information that was being sent to me. And it's being broadcast constantly and I'm a very positive person. I try to be. And I just got to say it. It's just given me more peace to just turn the TV off, you know, pray, be positive. Do research, you know, on the internet and talk to people and it's just given me a lot of peace. So if I can pass that on to anybody and just try to reassure you that there is faith, you know, out there and over fear. I I would like to give that, you know, to you because it's really helped me to deal with a lot that's going on. Also, I want everyone to know that I am praying for our district, for our kids, for our teachers. For everybody, the employees. I I know this is a difficult time, but you do have people out there praying. And I'm one of them and I know there's many others. And I'm just praying that God will protect our children as they go back to school from every predator, disaster, demon, devil, disease. And I just pray that in Jesus's name because I know that he is bigger than this COVID. So, you know, it just, again, it gives me peace and it helps me get through this time. And that's how I'm able to be so confident and and happy during this time. Also, let's see, I I know I had a lot I wanted to say tonight. I'm not going to keep going on. I'm just going to kind of cut it there. I just, again, welcome you all back. I'm excited. I can't wait to start visiting the schools and seeing everybody. And who knows, maybe soon we'll be able to hug again, shake hands again and get back to to life and just being happy again. So that's my prayer for everybody. I also just wanted to add that tonight, I'm really not feeling well. I'm dealing with dehydration issues. It happens sometimes. I overdo it and with this heat, it's just not, it it doesn't work for me. I should probably live in Alaska, but it it just happens sometimes. I get dehydrated and it slows me down and it's kind of a bummer. But it I I don't know. I just wanted to share everybody with that and just let you know, I'm probably going to be logging off soon. And I'm very sorry and I hope you accept my apologies and I thank you for that. But again, please just try to stay positive, don't feed into the fear and just know that, you know, there is a God and he is bigger than this. So I'm just hoping that we all kind of remember that if if you're a religious person or if you believe. So just thank you and again, welcome back.
Thank you, trustee Akis. Trustee Love French.
Well, hi there. Good evening, everyone. I am totally excited about the children returning to school. I watched them walk in my community. They're smiling. The teachers seem happy. I'm excited that we made it. I know that we have are still continuing to go through this pandemic. Just like Holly said, you know, prayer works, you know, whoever, you know, you're praying to. I appreciate everything that everyone is doing. I will do my best to continue to support everyone. I'm excited about the the people that are coming for the contact tracing and the COVID nineteen testing right onsite. I'm really excited about that. Everyone, you know, enjoy. I hope you had a wonderful. Summer and I won't keep it too long, but I am excited about school returning. I am.
Thank you, trustee Love French. I concur with pretty much everything that has been said by my fellow trustees. Who would have thought a year and a half ago, we would be out of school? I'm just so happy that we're in we're in the position to bring our students back, bring our teachers back. But again, we have to be safe in doing it and that's been the message for the past year and a half. I remember our first board meeting when we voted to shut down for two weeks. That two weeks turned then into two months and then to the end of the year. We did not have any instruction last year. I know so many people that have caught COVID. That I know a lot of people that have passed. I know a lot of people that know a lot of people that have passed. From this this horrible, horrible virus. I've never got it, thank God, but I did get my vaccination. When the vaccination was first talked about, I was totally against it. And Holly mentioned faith in God and I was totally against it. I was not getting that vaccination. I don't care what. But you know, I woke up at four o'clock in the morning for a week and something kept saying, why won't you get, why aren't you getting it? If you get this and I have a respiratory problem. What would my faith be? So I had to ponder that. I had to keep praying and God let me to get that vaccine. And I got it in January and I don't regret. It was a sense of relief, pretty much. And I got my second vaccine. I got sick after the second one, but it was still. I was in control of this narrative whether I wanted to to be consumed by COVID. I'm not telling you to get it. I don't think that the vaccine should be mandated for anyone to get it. But we are our brother and sister's keeper. And I I said this at the last board meeting. If I get sick and I work close around you, it's a possibility that you're going to get sick. And then you're going to take it home to your family and then they're going to get sick. This variant, this this virus is horrible and it's worse than just the cold. A lot of people say that people die from the flu, but not like this, not like this. You know, I have to tell you, my my son, my oldest son, he's a movie producer and he was on the set of a movie last year. From November until April and they had to get COVID test every single day. Every single day, they got a COVID test because they did not want to bring COVID to the set. Because that'll shut down the set and it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. If one person got sick, then they would have to social, they would have to go into quarantine. So it's important that we. Look out for one another. I'm not saying get get to get vaccinated, but if it's wearing masks and social distancing, washing your hands. And look out for one another. I go into the grocery store and I see so many people crowding in the stores, not just touching food, touching things. You know, and I had a friend that that said that she was talking to this woman. And the lady was just diagnosed with COVID, but she said she had to go to the store and get groceries and she's in the store without a mask. I know that we have mixed feelings. We are we're separated. But at the end of the day, we have to do this for the kids because the kids can't march down and get a vaccination. They can't. We deal with babies. They can't do this on their own and the children are willing to wear masks. My four year old grandson, he keep his mask on. No, do we like wearing masks? I hate that thing. I don't like wearing masks. I know, but I do it and I still wear my mask because I can get COVID, not know I have it because I'm vaccinated and give it to someone else. So I do wear my mask and I do I do look out for you. And as teachers, you know, I just, you know, being around children, you know, they're not washing their hands good, you know, they're not, you know. But I just have to say, you know. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for taking care of our babies and teaching them. What they should do to help each other. You know, if your friend, if you have a classmate that need help, you know, you help them. You know, and so I just want to say that. My comments were were going to be on COVID protocol and how important it is that we follow this California Department of Public Health. And this COVID battle. A year and a half is a long time. You know, I didn't, I would not have even imagined us to be here right now, but we are. And we have to, we have to get rid of it. And, you know, I was thinking COVID may not go anywhere, but we have to get stronger to beat it. And, you know, we have to follow the guidelines. You know, it's like sometime you don't want to have stop at a red light, but you have to stop at that red light to prevent an accident. You have to put on your seatbelt, you know, you don't get into a car thinking I'm going to be in an accident, but you put that seatbelt on for protection. So in the event that you're in a car accident, that seatbelt can help save your life. And so that's what we have to do. We have to make decisions that we may not want to make, but it'll if it if it can save our lives. And save our family members' lives and we have to do what we have to do and you have to make that decision to do it. I don't think that mandating anyone, but you have to make the decision to do the right thing. And so. We have to follow those safety measures. Otherwise, we'll be back at square one. And I know none of us want to be back at square one. You know, our children are so excited. I drove around the first day of school. And I saw the different celebrations, Mason Lindit with the balloons and, you know, the parents out there so happy to bring their children to school. But we also have parents that are not that happy to bring their children to school. They got to keep them home because they want them to be safe. And so I don't know how we're going to do this. I'm praying that we can continue to stay in the classroom. And teachers, you know, I was in the car. I was in the car by myself and you and you're out there. With all of the students and the parents, you know, and making the parents feel comfortable dropping off their children. And if it's wearing a mask and washing our hands and getting tested. Then I think that's what we could do. I think that that that's minimal thing we can do. Because we have control over this narrative right here and right now. We do. So with that being said, I will move on. And again, I'm so happy that we're back. And again, the hope hopefully hopefully we can stay in in-person instruction. Okay, moving on to section ten, adoption of the minutes. We will, I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting, Bennett, of July thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve Love French.
I have a motion by trustee Love French. Is there a second?
Benz, I second.
And a second by Christine, trustee Benz, any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Ben sign.
Trustee Eckes. I'll take note that Trustee Eckes left the meeting eight, ten P M. Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to section eleven, concern agenda. We will be taking items eleven point oh two through eleven point two nine. Um, moving on to item section twelve. Are there any items? No, I'm sorry. Back to section eleven. Are there any items trustees would like to remove from their consent agenda?
Madam President, I would like to pull eleven fourteen. Dr. Mitchell will be speaking on that.
Okay. Hearing none, um, we will move to section twelve. No, I'm not. What, what, what is wrong with me? Okay. You know, I am, I'm a motion over, over this COVID and it's just on my mind right now. Okay, hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda minus eleven point fourteen?
I motion Hunter.
I have a motion by Trustee Hunter. Is there a second?
Uh, Ben, I sec, second.
And a second by Trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Ben sign.
Trustee Hunter. Hunter, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass four zero. Okay, um, moving to eleven fourteen, business services. Approve, approval of crossing guards through all city management for the school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Trustee Turner. I just wanted to pull this briefly, uh, board to let you know that um, although we are uh, funding this uh, crossing guard contract solely as a school district, uh, want the board to be aware that the school districts are not responsible for paying for crossing guards. It's supposed to be a city function. At minimum, they should be splitting the costs with us. Uh, it is my plan to uh, to discuss, to uh, meet with city council for, for Adelanto City as well as Vic, uh, Victorville City Council, uh, to request their portion of this contract and, and payment for these services. We know that Victorville has, has had a long standing agreement to, to uh, assist with these, with these costs. Uh, and so the board, I will bring this contract board for, back to the board for, to, for amendment, uh, to reflect um, uh, the, the, the equal share split between Adelanto and Victorville, if I'm able to, to secure that. I wanted to bring this before the board today. We do have some wonderful crossing guards out there. I saw them all over the city doing a fabulous job of getting our kids across the street safely. We think that adds to both the uh, felt safety as well as perceived safety for our parents uh, to have adults at these, uh, some of these dangerous uh, crossing paths to our schools. And so it was important to me to get, to get the, this contract funded so we can get those folks working for our schools. But it is my intention to um, uh, go and request uh, equal, the equal share among the two cities that we serve. And we'll be bringing this uh, back for a minute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Are there any questions, trustees?
So are we vote, voting on this or are, are we gonna wait on this until after you speak to?
Yes.
Sid, cities, yes?
Yeah, yes, Trustee Benz. I'd ask the board to uh, approve this contract in uh, between here and the next one. I will have met with uh, both city councils.
Okay, okay, just, just, just being, being clear.
Thank you.
Something I'd like to add. Um, when you're speaking with them, um, Dr. Mitchell, can you speak with Victorville on why there is so much water outside of Morgan Kincaid?
I, I will, and I also have uh, Mr. Kraus looking into that as well. I did share your concerns uh, with, that you shared with me a couple of weeks ago. And I just recently shared the pictures that you sent today. I appreciate that. So we'll have uh, Mr. Kraus and M and O looking at that and I'll be happy to speak about that to the city as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee, um, Hunter, do you have any questions or comments?
No que, no questions, thank you.
Okay, I just want to say um, that the city of Victorville has been really, really good and, and providing, they pay fifty percent of our crossing guards and they've always done that. Uh, last year, we didn't have any students, so of course, you know, there's no record of them, which they didn't have to pay. But I don't think that there would be a problem with the city of Victorville. Um, it was just a matter of asking them, then I think that they would have been able to provide that. Now, the city of Adelanto, that's a different story. The city of Adelanto has never provided funds and, and I'm, I'm glad, Dr. Mitchell, that you will be going and talking with them. And you know, I, I volunteered to go along with you because it's very important that, you know, they contribute to the cost of that, keeping our students safe. You know, but as far as the city of Victorville, I have no, I have no regrets that they won't do their part. They've always done it, you know, and so it would not be a problem there. So um, yes, the crossing guards are, are, are there. And um, so um, I, I did not like this board agenda and I talked to Dr. Mitchell about it. But I will vote to, to approve it tonight, but um, I really wish we could have had Victorville on that. So um, without further ado, I'll call for the vote.
Madam President, I still need a motion and I use.
You didn't get a motion? Okay, I need a motion to approve all city service for our crossing guards.
This is Benson and I mo, mo, motion to uh, approve.
I have, I have a motion by Trustee Benz. Is there a second?
I second Hunter.
And a second by Trustee Hunter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz.
Ben sign.
Trustee Hunter. Hunter, I.
La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
And Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass four zero. Okay, moving on to um, section thirteen. Thirteen oh one, the school reopening and COVID protocol. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, tonight, board, we wanted to uh, share with uh, our community as well as the board and our staff watching uh, just specifically uh, about uh, the COVID landscape that we're up against right now. Uh, Stephen Quintero is gonna give us a, an overview from a national and statewide perspective. Uh, he's also gonna go through the um, COVID protocols that we've settled upon uh, for our district that's consistent with the California Department of Public Health. And then followed by that, we're gonna have Mr. Kraus address uh, some of the P P E and, and um, uh, precautionary uh, strategies that we've enacted to keep our staff and students safe. And we also will be sharing a little bit about the uh, the A M LLC contract uh, that we're proposing for approval tonight. So I'll turn it over to Stephen and Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. And uh, can I, uh, somebody needs to stop sharing the screen so I could pull up the PowerPoint? Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, you should be able to see the PowerPoint presentation now. Thank you. So good evening, President Turner, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, staff and guests. Uh, uh, thank you for joining us this evening. As Dr. Mitchell had mentioned, uh, Mr. Michael Kraus and myself will be covering uh, COVID protocols and safety as well as give you some background uh, since March uh, when we closed down. So our objectives for tonight will be the background of COVID then and now. We'll also go over the district core values. We'll talk about the California Department of Public Health K through twelve guidance, COVID nineteen preparedness and protocols and next steps. First, you know, let's talk about what we knew back then. So most of the country was shut down due to COVID nineteen. The goal was to prevent as the outbreak and spread of COVID nineteen. And as you know, the high desert, especially Adelanto and Victorville, were hit very hard by COVID nineteen. At times, our two cities were ranked number one and two for daily cases, a hundred and forty per day. The positivity rate was twenty-four percent and the health equity metrics was twenty-five percent. Also, the ICU capacity reached a hundred and three percent, meaning there was not enough hospital beds for patients in all of San Bernardino County. So definitely it was a devastation to San Bernardino County. Unfortunately, with the closure, uh, there were harms associated to students. In a survey by the Association of Children's Motive School Instruction with Child Impaired Experiences and Wellbeing during the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, the survey was done during October to November twenty twenty. For students, there was learning outcomes for those in hybrid or virtual learning were worse than normal in person. There was a decrease in physical activity, time spent outside, in person, and also in-person time with friends. And then students typically suffered mental or emotional health issues. And that was all being part of the COVID closure. Those are some of the harms associated with it. And for parents in general, they reported learning outcomes that fell short for their children in hybrid and virtual learning. The parents also dealt with the loss of work and job stability. And then the uh, parents also experienced emotional distress and difficulty. It was really tough on everybody, both adults and children. What we know now from the public health science. So all the research has shown that children get COVID less than adults. We know that so right now nationally, just you know, it's about fifteen percent for eighteen and under in regards to COVID of all the cases out there. Children are most likely to get COVID from adults. And they know that masks are a major force in the prevention, the spread of COVID nineteen. Now, children are most likely to get COVID nineteen at a wedding, a party, a playdate with family and friends, or even a funeral. It's, would be more unlikely for them to get COVID while attending in-person school based on all the research over the past year. Among children and adolescents aged eight, less than eighteen years in Mississippi, close contact with persons with COVID nineteen and gatherings with persons outside the household and lack of consistent mask use were associated with COVID nineteen infection. Whereas attending school or childcare was not associated with an outbreak of positive COVID nineteen test results. And then what are the implications of the public health practice? So close contacts with persons with COVID nineteen and gatherings contribute to COVID nineteen infections in children and adolescents. We know that consistent use of face mask and when possible, social distancing continue to be important to prevent COVID nineteen spread. One of the key things in, in the fall of twenty twenty that was developed by the district was the establishment list of core values to guide our staff and families through the pandemic, with a focus on health, academic instruction and communication. These core values have stood the test of time and hold true today. I'd like to emphasize two of these five core values. Number one, that we discuss every single day, adhere to COVID nineteen safety guidelines to protect the health, safety and wellness of students and staff. And number three, to provide school leaders, teachers and support staff with training, resources and supports to successfully implement a high-quality instructional program. And this is something we talk on a daily, regular basis. Now, as you know, on July ninth, uh, the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, uh, came out with new guidelines. The California Department of Public Health, along with the State of California Department of Education, agreed with those guidelines that all students must have access to safe and full in-person instruction. It's also noted that though vaccination seems to be the primary way to prevent COVID nineteen, most of our students are not eligible, which is why masking in schools is the number one way to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. And as we have done every day and every week, we look at the assessments of, that are done by the CDC and the California Department of Public Health. And so right now, on November first, uh, they're looking at a possible mask uh, update uh, to the requirements and recommendations. So we look forward to learning more about that as well. So at this time, I'd like to pass it over to Mr. Michael Kraus. Uh, and Michael, please let me know when you'd like me to change the slides.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Good evening, President Turner, members of the board and everyone with us this evening. As we continue the presentation, I will just briefly talk about the COVID nineteen preparedness at our sites and throughout the district related to supplies and equipment. So one of the things that we wanted to do early on was to upgrade our ventilation system with the highest filtration we could in our HVAC units, our heating and A C units, and also within our buses, uh, throughout the A C system. We also uh, ensured that all of our buses uh, have air conditioning in them uh, to circulate the air as well on the buses. So that was one thing we were able to do over this past summer. Also, we implemented new sanitization protocols. Uh, it's a deeper cleaning related to uh, COVID nineteen. And so all of our custodians are aware of these protocols as well as staff throughout the district. We've also purchased EPA registered, the Environmental Protection Agency registered effective disinfectant. So anything used at a school site is regulated, but as long as it's EPA approved, then it can be used at the school district. And so we do have uh, effective disinfectant uh, to COVID nineteen. We also, if you've been to our school sites, you might have encountered a uh, temperature assessment device that you stand close to and it takes your temperature on your face and lets you know uh, what your temperature is. It talks to you and says if you're okay or not. Um, if it's a hun, if it's less than one hundred point four, it'll let you know and it'll be green. And if you're over, if you're one hundred point four above, it will show red and let you know. So we have installed those at all of the sites for visitors or, or to our school district uh, that come in such as parents, guests and, and other people that may come to the office. We also have purchased massive quantities of masks, sanitizers, desk shields, air purifiers, gowns, uh, face shields, things of this nature. Uh, and we want to make sure that they're distributed throughout the district at all sites. And we have uh, been working on issuing those to all staff and all students uh, as much as we possibly can uh, this week. And so we will continue to do that and continue to be able to do that into the well into the future. Uh, we, again, the next point talks about providing all staff uh, and students P P. We installed hand sanitizer devices and, and hand sanitizer pumps throughout the district. We've installed touchless paper towel dispensers in the restrooms and provided student desk shields and teacher barriers in classrooms and office spaces. And Mr. Quintero, with that, if you can move to the next slide. So some of the other things, effective August ninth, twenty twenty-one that we have instituted. So staff and students will wear a face mask inside, but it's optional outside. So if you're at a site and you see people without a mask, it is optional outside at this time. Uh, the second one is no physical social distancing on the bus or in the classroom. Uh, strictly adhering to the COVID nineteen exposure protocol when it comes to contact tracing and quarantine guidelines. You'll hear more about that with our great partnership with A M LLC this evening. Um, staff and students will, will self-screen at home for COVID nineteen symptoms before arriving to a school site or district office. And then staff and students will sanitize or wash hands frequently. So we have instituted these protocols. We have sent them out uh, in various forms and will continue to emphasize these protocols. And they are subject to change. Again, as Mr. Quintero mentioned, as the guidance changes, uh, we will also be assessing our guidance and uh, determine next steps on that. Next slide, Mr. Quintero, please, sir. Here we just have a example of do choose masks and how they uh, need to fit your face. And then do not choose masks and what they uh, you know, depending on what they have and what they're made of. And so you can see there just the various aspects of this uh, mask wearing. And one of the things that we see a lot of is that uh, wearing of the mask correctly. It has to cover both of the nose and the mouth. And so I know we, our students probably have the hardest time in doing that, but um, hopefully they'll get used to it. And we do, uh, the great news is we have child-sized face mask for our students and face shield. So um, we do have adult size and we have child size. So we won't be giving, issuing out to our students adult-sized face mask. So we're excited to have a plenty of child size as well. Next slide, please, sir. So it talks about gaiters and face shields on this slide, special considerations. And then with children, uh, making sure uh, that you have a one that fits over their mouth. And one of the things that I've learned is that if you twist the uh, the ear pieces that go over the ears, if you just twist them once or twice, it'll be a little snug or fit. So if it's a little too big for your child or for you, you can actually twist them and it'll fit on the ears a little better. So uh, just a tip there. Next slide, please, sir. All right, hand washing and sanitizing. And so we are reinforcing hand washing with soap and water. We have signs around the district uh, in most, if not all restrooms and around the district to uh, help demonstrate that. We remind everyone to wash their hands and help children wash their hands. And if hand washing is not possible, use hand sanitizer with at least sixty percent alcohol. This is the standard, at least sixty percent alcohol in the hand sanitizers should be stored away and out of the sight of young children. So you will, will, will not see us issuing uh, students hand sanitizer. And the reason being is because of that alcohol content, it's not safe to have that out and with the little individual bottles and giving them out to students. So we have outfitted all the classrooms with pump, very large uh, bottles of pump hand sanitizer. Um, uh, hand sanitizer wall mounts as well. So uh, we're working on ensuring that we have plenty of hand sanitizers for everybody in a safe environment. So, uh, we're working on ensuring that we have plenty of hand sanitizer for everybody in a safe environment. And then respiratory etiquette covering coughs and sneezes, that's generally been the etiquette for flu season or any other time, um, that we encourage that. So, Mr. Quintero, the next slide. Okay, protocols for self-screening. So this is a way to help evaluate and adjust prevention strategies and provide protection for our schools. If anyone is at home and they feel that they have any of these, uh, symptoms, this is part of the self-screening process. We also have a series of questions, uh, that they ask themselves before they come to work. And then that way they have a good idea. We've also outfitted staff with handheld thermometers to take their temperature uh, from home, so they don't have to worry about coming to work and then taking their temperature. They can self-screen from home. And then, uh, we have this again, great partnership with AM LLC. If they suspect that they possibly could have been exposed or have something, we'll hear more about that in a few minutes. Next slide, Mr. Quintero. Uh, here we are. So you might have seen on the agenda and heard us, uh, mentioning this evening. Uh, AM LLC is a company that we're very, uh, excited to be, uh, partnering with because they offer such a wide, uh, variety of services that we just don't have enough staff for the amount of potential, uh, situations that we will encounter. And so we were able to, um, hire AM LLC, get them here, uh, for the first day of school. And they were actually here the week before and went around to all of our sites, checked them out, uh, talked to their team and are continuously, uh, making adjustments. But we have, uh, created a great partnership with them. You can see some of the things they're doing, um, remote and onsite training, logistics, uh, general reporting related to COVID nineteen with the health department and anyone else they need to report to. Um, they, uh, have very trained staff in the medical, uh, field that are able to assist us, uh, with the various questions that come up. Uh, for instance, I'm not a health expert and and Mr. Quintero, so we don't know everything there is to know, but they actually have licensed nurses and health providers that can help answer those questions. Um, we have created a, a email uh, for the district to send questions and comments to. We've also have a general number that can be called and it will go to AM LLC staff that they will, uh, be able to monitor and talk to people. And then, uh, data analytics and reporting. So we're excited that, uh, they're going to be taking on the lion's share of the, uh, analytics and reporting for us. Next slide, Mr. Quintero. And we've also been working with AM LLC to create some protocols and flow charts. And this is just an idea of some of the situations that could be out there and some of the situations that AM LLC staff will be working on. So for instance, school symptom screening, a student becomes sick or reports. Oh, the slide went backwards. Uh, thank you. So for instance, a student becomes sick or reports a new COVID diagnosis, an ill individual, isolation and quarantine for fully vaccinated individual or an unvaccinated individual or a case in the classroom school setting. So this is just a small, uh, examples of what AM LLC will be working with our district. And we have a committee. The district also has a committee made up of district staff that will be working hand in hand with AM LLC staff to assess these situations and have that communication flowing. And so we're excited to, uh, be able to partner with them. And so with that, the next slide, Mr. Quintero, I believe I'm going to be turning it back over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kraus. So, uh, just so you guys know, uh, trustees as well as all those in attendance tonight, uh, we have rebuilt the webpage and our COVID nineteen information. So we've added in for, uh, FAQs for, uh, frequently asked questions for staff as well as our, our families. I'll show you some of the investigation flow charts that Michael just mentioned in a moment. Um, but we have also put up their self-screening and PDF files, so the parents can download that in English and Spanish. And so we've changed, uh, our tack on COVID nineteen and as to provide as much information as possible uh, to make sure we prevent outbreaks in, in our schools and to also keep people aware of the status of changes in regards to the, uh, policies and updates provided by the T- CDC and the California, uh, Department of Public Health. Um, some of our next steps as regards to, uh, COVID is to continue to monitor. Like I said, we'll get information every single day. Um, I can jump on one of three different sites, whether it's San Bernardino County, state or federal. And there'll be updates on travel, there'll be updates on masks, there'll be updates on, uh, spread, et cetera. And so we have to keep up to date on those. Uh, we also have to monitor our community. Uh, we notice how L- LA County has had a, uh, uh, obviously an increase in the Delta variant. And so we're not, obviously not that far from LA County, so we need to keep up to date in our region. Uh, remind staff always about the, and students about the protocols and washing the hands and wearing the mask. Uh, I was visiting campus today and our staff and teachers were so great working with the young children and letting them know, you know, pull your mask up, you know, because it tends to sometimes drop below the nose. And then, uh, we'll assess and make adjustments as, uh, Mr. Kraus said, and we keep saying, uh, no one's ever been through a pandemic. We're learning it together and we'll do what we can to make necessary adjustments to make sure we keep safe and healthy. With that said, I do want to share, share with you really quick, um, from the website. The COVID tab. So hopefully you can see the website now and I'm clicking on the COVID nineteen tab. But one thing I think that was very valuable, just so you know, is a lot of P- uh, staff are asking questions, what if this happened? And and what's the protocol or flow chart? So what we did is we uploaded from AM LLC, uh, their Google slides. And basically what it does is it tells us if a student is affected, if somebody, uh, has it and whether they're a vaccinated or unvaccinated person. And so this is the Google slide, but you can always just click out and download the PDF for yourself. Uh, which will give you a, a much clearer vision and able to read all the content that's provided. Uh, but we feel this information, uh, would help because many of our managers and staff have asked questions about, uh, the investigation process of the flow chart to take place. Um, and, uh, and with that said, I think AM LLC has done an outstanding job of providing us the resources uh, a- as well as the knowledge to help, uh, uh, sustain and control any possible outbreaks. Let me close that really quick. So I just wanted to take a moment to show you that there's a lot of information there. And so thank you very much. We appreciate your time. And if there's any que- you know, if you have anything else, uh, we'll be happy to share with that, uh, a- and as a follow-up. Thank you very much.
Trustees, do you have any questions regarding this presentation? Start with trustee La French.
Ah, I want first. That's a first. I want to say those flow charts are awesome because that will give everyone the opportunity to be able to look and follow the flow chart to find out what the answer is or what they should be doing. Those are awesome. It's better than having to read through fifteen different policies. The flow chart, that was awesome. And thank you for your presentation. It was very, very, um, inciting about knowing what we're going to do, what we've been doing. And I believe in us and I would not have expected anything different. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee La French. Trustee Benz.
On mute. Trustee Benz, you're on mute.
I haven't been, been in Zoom and now I'm out of touch now. I forgot how to. Uh, no, I do, uh, appreciate the, the information is there on the web website that if, if we have questions, they're there. And of course, the flow, flow charts do make it ease, easier to fa- follow the information. Thank, thank you so, so much for your presentation.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee Hunter.
Yes, thank you. That was so informative. And I guess everything that I heard just gives me more of a confidence of what's happening on our campuses and for our students. And I especially love that we have little faces sized face masks right now. And, um, that just is, it, it may seem like a simple thing, but it just really, really helps when our children are more comfortable and they have those little masks that we're just talking about it that are not sliding up and down and all over their little faces. And, um, you know, I just feel like the funds that we, we've received have just been expended to just increase our safety on the campus, safety for our students, our teachers, our staff. And so that's exciting news. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hunter. I concur with my fellow trustees that the presentation, what we're doing for safety and, um, COVID protocol is first class. And I have to commend you. You're doing an excellent job. Um, and for us to have a company, uh, to come in, contact, take contact tracing and COVID testing, this is amazing. So I, again, hopefully we can, with everything we have in place, we should be okay. And I'm praying that we do because our kids need to be inside that classroom, getting everything that they deserve. And, um, that they're rightful and deserve. So again, thank you so much. And, um, we're in this together. Okay.
Trustee Turner, may I make a comment, please?
Yes. She had her hand up. Trustee Hunter, yeah, you want to say something?
Um, just real quick, I didn't know if I missed it or maybe I didn't hear it. Uh, for the company that's providing the testing, testing, that's across the board. Does that include our students as well? Like if we get a report, would the students be able to access that as well? Or is it just for the staff?
Well, we'll be able to, can we, can we do that in the next section? Because we're gonna, uh, is someone there gonna report on that?
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I just had a brief comment. So just a brief comment, just want to, uh, compliment, uh, Mr. Quintero. Uh, he's been, he's been our, uh, resident expert on all things COVID since we, since we started. And I've seen him to every meeting across the state and the county to try to be an expert in this, in this, uh, in this field. I mean, the, the information changes day to day. Uh, we hear different science perspectives. And so I've really just had a great deal of confidence, uh, in, in, in the information that we've been able to provide because I know that, uh, Stevens at the helm and and I also want to compliment Mr. Kraus as well. He was super responsive, uh, to the needs of the district and set out this contract and put it in place. Bought all this stuff for the safety of our district. Really, the only thing that has slowed us down has been back orders and and logistics that are really beyond our control. But beyond that, I really just prepped both of their efforts. And I also want to also include, uh, give a, uh, a, a thank you uh, to, to Nanette Cadilly and Diane Lynn. They have really pushed me and the team really hard to, um, be as safe as we can. Uh, has challenged our thinking, has challenged our perceptions of things, uh, really giving us, um, the voices from classrooms and teachers and classified staff who sometimes we just don't see their perspective. And so I appreciate both, both of our, our partners with CSCA and ADTA and help us be, get better. Uh, I, I continue to say this is my first pandemic and, um, ho- hopefully my last. And so maybe I'll be better on the next one. But, uh, but for now, uh, we're learning as we're going. And I think that we can get better as we work together. So thanks so much, uh, team. This is truly a team effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Okay, uh, moving on to section fourteen, new business. Uh, ratification of agreement with AM LLC for contact tracing and COVID nineteen testing. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, so Mr. Kraus, just be super brief. You just went through a detailed presentation, but I would like you to address, uh, trustee Hunter's question.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much. And also in the room with us this evening is Dr. Chris Orlia. He's with AM LLC, he's the chief, uh, experience officer. And he was been instrumental. This actually happened basically overnight. Our committee met with, uh, AM LLC staff, our, our district COVID committee and heard what they had to offer. We, uh, told them what we were looking for and they really threw themselves into this. And it does include staff and students and parents and anybody that is suspects that they might have been exposed, any of those scenarios that you can think of. We have a hotline that they can call, that they can email, and the staff will, uh, AM LLC staff will get back to them, uh, very quickly. The other point on this agenda item I wanted to point out is that there is a grant from the state. So it's called the Direct Funding for Testing Personnel Grant through the California Department of Public Health that will be, uh, assisting us with taking care of the cost of this, uh, these services through AM LLC. So we are not having to use general fund money and we are not having to use S R fund money at this time. As long as there's money with the state and that our district is eligible, and we believe that we will continue to be eligible for this grant funding in the future, uh, that will take care of the cost of this. And we know that as you've heard, uh, the, uh, situations might increase. And so we might need to, uh, ra- ramp up a little more of operations with COVID testing and contact tracing. So with that, I just wanted to be brief and let you know that we're excited to work with them. They have a whole host of experienced staff that are working with our district dedicated to us on a daily basis dedicated to our staff, our parents and our students. And with that, um, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. And again, we also have the chief, uh, uh, experience officer with AM LLC and with us this evening as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Our trustees, do you have any questions regarding testing, um, contact tracing? And the protocol on how they will go about doing that?
No further questions for me. That, that was perfect.
Great, great. Trustee Benz?
Uh, no, I, I'm clear on the information. Thank, thank you.
Trustee La French?
No, I'm excited.
I'm excited as well. Um, and so the, uh, COVID testing, that will be free of charge, right?
Yes, there is no cost to anyone that has to be tested. The grant will cover the cost of testing. And, uh, pretty much everything is, is covered. So there's no cost to our staff, no cost to our students, no cost, uh, to the district. It's grant funded. So we're excited again to have been able to put this in place almost overnight. Just, just amazing.
When I saw this on the agenda, I was really, really excited. Um, and then to find out that there was a grant for it, that just made it so more exciting for it because it's definitely needed. Um, so you know, thank you for having, um, um, what, what is Christopher?
Orlia.
Orlia, Mr. Orlia, um, present, but I think all of our questions are answered regarding this. So thank you. I'm still excited.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we won't need, we don't, won't need it, but I'm happy that it's there for us. Okay, moving on to section fifteen, policy introduction, updates and reading. Now, we need a motion to approve. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm looking at that. Okay, board, I need a motion to approve.
A motion, Hunter.
I have a motion by trustee Hunter. Is there a second?
Uh, French, second.
And a second by trustee La French. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz. And Si.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, I.
The French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner, I, motion passed for zero. Yay. Okay, moving on to, um, fifteen, policy introduction, updates and reading. Um, fifteen oh one, um, we would like to waive the first reading and approve the board policy and administrative regulation six one five eight for our independent studies, uh, program. This is something that is beaded like today, tomorrow. And, um, if we can agree to approve this without a second reading, we could go right into implementation of our independent studies program.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, tonight. Tomorrow morning.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion by trustee La French. Is there a second?
Hunter.
By trustee Hunter, any discussion?
Just have a quick, quiet question. We can make, make change, changes if need, need it down, down the road. Can we?
Yes.
Yes, yes, trustee Benz, absolutely.
Okay, just check, checking. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Trustee Benz. And Si.
Trustee Hunter.
Hunter, I.
The French.
Uh, French, I.
Mister Turner.
And trustee Turner, I, motion passed for zero. Okay, moving on to section sixteen, superintendent report, events and future activities significant to the district. Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, trustee Turner. Uh, just want to extend my warm and sincere, uh, welcome back to our entire uh, Alamo Elementary School District community. That's our entire staff, our parents. Again, in all our schools this week, it's just been such, so exciting to see parents. We got so many anecdotes. I had so many kindergartners crying on my, my, my ankles. And I, and I saw so many fathers, uh, tearing up watching the kindergarteners in first grade, was going to class. It just was funny. I had a laugh with, with a parent today. This guy was a big, tough guy. And I was, I, I, I walked up to him because he was, he was rubbing his eye and I asked him if he needed anything. And he said, no, I'm just, my, my baby's leaving me. And we just laughed heartily today. It was just funny to see this really big guy. And we just laughed heartily today. It was just funny to see this really big guy cry about his little baby girl, uh kindergarten going to school. But we made it through the most challenging year uh that could be imagined navigating the pandemic. I want to commend the entire ASCD staff for your resolve, grit, and determination. This past year was extremely tough, but we made it through. Thank you, staff, from the bottom of my heart. I am so proud of our efforts. Uh, to our parents, I'm so thankful that you have done, for what you have done to make the best of distance learning last year. Uh, parents, um, if there was any good that came out of this pandemic, I can say that we have gained a deeper appreciation for parent involvement and engagement. We could not have continued the education of our youth uh without your involvement and engagement. I so want to say thank you. Uh, parents, with all that we've learned about um, about your involvement with students and how important it is to their success, I encourage you, I implore you, uh, don't let up. Uh, now that your kids are back in person. So I want to give just a couple notes of advice to our parents on the line. And so I want to say, keep up the momentum, uh, stay involved, stay connected, stay engaged, uh, push your children to challenge, uh, to take on challenging difficulty. Uh, reach out early to your children's teachers and strengthen the teacher-parent uh partnership. We want our children to know that uh, that, that uh, parents got, got, got your, got your kids back. And your teachers got your kids friending together. Uh, we got your kids covered. And so we want our kids to know that they're covered three hundred sixty degrees by their families and their families at schools. And so parents, take advantage of that. Your, your teachers want to hear from you. They want to support you. They see you as partners. They're advocates for your kids in your absence. Uh, they're proud of your children, just as you are proud. And so just take, take, take uh solace in that and use that relationship to your child's benefit. I want you to push your children and cajole your children and nag your children and pester your children, pester them and bother them to be their best. Uh, don't take uh any lackluster mediocrity uh from them. Um, push and pull and do whatever you have to do to get the very best out of your children. Don't let them give up or shy away from challenge. Uh, don't let them, don't let them shy away. Don't let them give up. Keep pushing them to do their best. Hold them responsible for their work, for their behavior, uh, hold, and praise them not only for what they achieve, but praise them more importantly for their effort. We want to praise effort. I don't care if they went from an F to a D minus. Praise that. I don't care if they went from multiple suspensions to not many suspensions. Praise them for that effort. I don't care. If you can get them to clean one dish in the house, uh, praise them for that effort because effort is what matters. Effort is what makes the difference. Understand, uh, this is important that you, you don't learn good study habits overnight. Children don't learn good study habits overnight. They learn good study habits over time. And so I want to encourage you to, to, to uh put in, um, put in those standards uh for, for shutting down your house. Um, for creating quiet time, for creating steady time, so that, so that children get into the habit of learning how to study, learning how to turn off the noise. Uh, we don't, we, we don't raise kids. You raise cattle. You train kids. So we don't raise, we don't raise children. We, we raise cattle. But you actually have to train kids to learn how to study and learn how to be good students. And so I'd ask that you ask them to dial back the TV, dial back the game time, increase the time for homework and study. And, and kids are just like a bank account. A student's success depends on what we invest now. Uh, so invest heavy and invest consistently in your child. It will pay off. Guaranteed that what you put in now will pay off later, uh, as we get older and more feeble. Uh, I always say that all of us will be in diapers twice. And so we need our children uh to move on and be successful because all of us will have been in diapers twice in our lifetime. And so we need our children to be successful. And I also want you to trust and believe uh that your efforts will carry uh your children um through high school and onto life successfully. So I just wanted to say that and just to encourage our parents that, that I know that you're glad to send your kids back to school. I am as well. I, I actually was able to get a piece of fruit and a sandwich out of my refrigerator for the first time in a long time after having sent my kids back to school. They cleaned me out. They kept my refrigerator empty. They kept my air conditioner running. And uh, I'm so happy to send them back to school. So I know that you are too. But stay involved and connected because uh they need you to be successful. Um, I want to thank our school leaders and teachers for making uh these opening days uh so memorable and smooth. I mean, I just went from campus to campus. Our campuses are clean. They're beautiful. Uh, things were orderly. Things were in fashion. Our leaders were leading. Our, our support staff was supporting. So just want to thank you for that. I also want to thank our drivers and our custodial staff and CNS staff and proctors and aides and counselors and special education staff and ground staff. Secretary of Security Staff, M and O, and IT are working behind the scenes to help us open, reopen our schools for the twenty one, twenty two school year. I also want to thank cabinet um and, and our district staff for being visible at our schools and being uh lending a hand across uh when and where needed to help our schools open safely. We, we really, you know, I feel like I was in the way for the most part. I just enjoy just being in the environment. And I'd stand next to a principal. You know, our principals are cool because they were like, okay, uh, Dr. Mitchell, I really like you being here, but I got stuff to do. Can, can you walk with me? And so I just kind of chuckled at that and, and, and our principals, uh, being busy uh doing the work um that we, that they so enjoy doing. So we thank you for that. And lastly, again, I want to thank our parents and families and caregivers for showing how proud you were. I just saw so many kids just looking sharp and clean and just happy and smiling, even through the mask. And just inquisitive and curious, a lot of crying kindergartners, a lot, a lot of crying parents of kindergartners. And it's just, it's an awesome sight to see them. So, so uh, just, just enamored by that. These last couple days. Looking forward to visiting the rest of our schools this week. I do want to report about our enrollment board. I am so happy to report that the district's enrollment is trending up over last year. And we are still very busy enrolling kids every day. On, on, on August tenth, two thousand and twenty, exactly one year ago, we had seven, seven thousand four hundred and fifty kids enrolled. Today, one year, exactly one year later, we have seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine kids enrolled. We are up uh five hundred and nineteen kids year over year. So happy about that. In terms of our warm body count, uh, the first day of school, we had sixty-three hundred and eighty-one kids attend, uh, which was about an eighty percent attendance rate. Today, it was at sixty-six, sixty-six seventy-one, which represents about an eighty-four attendance rate. So we're hoping to get uh, to, to, to uh realize that full, so almost eight thousand students enrolled. And so we're working hard. I want to thank our tenant staff. I want to thank our enrollment center, who's just been working tirelessly uh to enroll our kids. Uh, we actually had to provide a tent. There's water and chairs outside of our enrollment center yesterday because we had, uh, the long lines uh waiting to enroll our kids. And so we're so, we're so thankful for that. And I just want to just end on a couple of beginning year meetings that I've had an opportunity to have. And so I met with all of our transportation staff on July twenty eighth. And greeted them and encouraged them and told them how important they are to the mission of this district. Um, we had our full day teacher, uh, professional learning and collaboration day. Uh, Ms. Cadilly spoke to that earlier. They're two phenomenal speakers. Uh, we also gave some time for teachers to meet with principals, and we also gave some time for teachers to start preparing for, preparing their rooms that day. I had an opportunity to meet with our child nutrition services staff, all of them, on August fifth. They had a speaker. They had balloons and candy and food. All, of course, our CNS workers meeting is going to be full of food. It was. It did not disappoint. And uh, so I had a good time there, stuffed my face, and greeted our people and, and, and told them how important they are to our mission. We had an all hands on deck. We had all of our managers, our ADTA and CSCA leaders, uh, and as well as all of our school secretaries attend a, a, a COVID protocol meeting on August sixth. Where we really laid out what our school protocols were and introduced um, uh, our team to uh, to uh, our COVID uh support team that's helping us. And so I got some upcoming meetings as well. We have a joint cabinet and ADTA, CSCA union leaders meeting on August thir- twenty-third. Looking forward to that. We have our all secretary meeting on September tenth. Looking forward to that, uh, where we meet with all of our school secretaries. We realized last year that we had some poor communication between the district and the school. And we thought we had good communication when we were meeting with the principals. But we failed to recognize who's really running our schools, which is our secretaries. And so we, we've established a quarterly meeting with our secretaries to make sure that they're in the loop and how we can best meet their needs. And then we will have our all classified meeting on Zoom uh on September twenty-first. Now, this is an opportunity to get posted. Last time, we had four hundred people online. It's an opportunity where we take to just uh hear from our classified staff, uh, from all over the district and all walks of life in our, in our, in our, in our classified uh, uh, staff. And hear uh their concerns and, and, and hear uh how we can uh better serve them as well. So looking forward to that. Board, I share those. Because as, as always, the board is always invited to address staff. Um, I will make sure it's in the, kind of the full calendar. And what you can participate in, we certainly are welcome. Uh, our staff is always happy here from our board. And so I want to end with one, on one note, board, I do, I, 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 I'm hearing, um, I'm hearing that, okay, looking at our current COVID context. We have authorization from the CD to continue Zoom meetings through September thirtieth. Uh, I did hear from uh, you know, Nanette earlier, as well as Diane, talked about uh trying to find as many ways to limit large groups. Um, we, we are scheduled to meet in person August twenty-fourth. We had planned our uh, uh, retirement celebration. We haven't had one in two years. I will bring it back. Um, I wanted to see if the board wanted to continue to meet in Zoom uh through September thirty to limit um gatherings. And so just wanted to put that out for the board's consideration, see if I can get consensus. Or do, do you want me to continue to plan for our first in-person meeting on August twenty-fourth?
Board, um, we need a consensus on that. Um, I'll start with you, uh, trustee Hunter. How do you feel about that?
Um, well, based on, you know, where we are right now, and um, I just don't see us doing the back and forth. I think we should, at this time, just kind of be still and continue uh until the end of September. The, in the direction that we're going right now and just uh, you know, increase that safety and just uh continue to meet on the Zoom. And without the um audience in the boardroom until, and then we could reevaluate it again at the end of the month.
Okay, thank you, trustee Hunter. Trustee Benz? Trustee Benz? Are you muted?
I forget. I'm here. I'm here. I was on mute. I was on mute. Um, yeah, I, I think it would be best to try to lim- limit large ga- gatherings. I mean, for now, I mean, it, it can be helped. We still have Zoom. So, you know, I'm flex- flexible. So, yeah.
Trustee, thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee La French?
Um, I, I too am flexible. I think that, you know, we can, before we have large gatherings, we can readdress it later.
Okay, great. And, and I agree with that too. Um, so we can continue with Zoom until the executive order uh expires on September thirtieth. That way, uh, we can, another layer of protection for our, our community, our staff, our teachers, our parents, and our retirees. Um, Dr. Mitchell, um, I would like you to introduce a new coordinator of state and federal programs.
Yes, I will. Thank you. I'm happy to do so. So tonight, uh, the board took action to hire uh a newest administrator to our team, um, Ms. Nashay Thompson. Please uh unmute yourself and show your screen and greet our community. Welcome to our district. Thank you.
Thank you for that, board and Dr. Mitchell. And thank you for having me. I'm really excited to get started serving the Adelanto and Victorville communities. So, um, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Welcome. Congratulations.
And so, board, I have my direction. I'm, I'm hearing some consensus to continue uh Zoom board meetings uh through uh, through the executive order. Uh, through uh September thirtieth, and, and at that point, we'll revisit. Uh, we may have an extension from the governor. I'm not sure, but we'll, we'll revisit. I also want to give my commitment too, to consider, I heard a variety of things uh from our teachers and staff, uh, much of it coming from uh Ms. Cadilly. So just to consider uh, uh, students getting, uh, getting their lunch and eating outside when possible. Uh, suspending in-person staff meetings and, and hold Zoom meetings while teachers are in their classrooms. Ordering, uh, ordering a package of wipes to put on every student's desk so that students come into the classroom and wipe their own desks down before instruction begins. Um, holding back-to-school night on Zoom as opposed to being in person. Um, holding uh parent-teacher conferences on Zoom as opposed to being in person, holding IEPs on Zoom as opposed to in person. Um, and we need to consider our large group meetings that I'm holding at the district office, like our site leaders meeting, um, maybe consider on Zoom. So we uh, we'll, we will discuss these um, these asks and requests on Thursday in our cabinet and, and we'll be happy to report. Uh, we're also going to get some feedback from our principals. We've gotten feedback from our unions and, and teachers. And so we'll get some feedback from our leaders and then we'll, uh, the adjustments that we'll make will certainly advise staff.
Can I add one thing, Dr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Um, I wanted to add those water stations versus those water fountains.
Yeah, we've ordered those and they're on back order. I'm sorry, but we have ordered those for every campus. And so I asked Mr. Kraus about that today, and he said, hey, uh, already ahead of the game on that. We've ordered them. Just waiting on the, the producer to, to get them to us. And so we'd be, we'll be replacing those old school water fountains with uh the water bottle fillers. So that's already happening. Thank you.
Trustee, any further questions for Dr. Mitchell or comments?
Yeah, those are my comments. Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell, I know we talked and um, are you ready to talk about the school information notebook that you and I talked about?
Oh, yes. Thanks. Thank you for reminding me. So uh, so we, we want to um, uh, we're putting together notebooks for each of the board, uh, board. Uh, we'll have uh school maps, emergency information, um, their school calendar, their professional development calendar, the programs that they have on campus. So that when you visit campus, I'm, I'm hoping that you would keep this notebook like in your trunk. And so like when you visit campus, you're able to pull that notebook out. And get some quick achievement information, bell schedule information, meeting information, uh, their professional development folkai, uh, what, what's the big idea on campus, what you can expect to see. As well as the, the major programs that are on that campus, uh, uh, as also including their emergency layout. So that way you're able to give information to first responders uh if, if some emergency happens. And I, I'd want you to have that in your trunk. And so it'll always be with you. And then on the occasion that you visit campuses, you're able to have some basic information about the school. So those are forthcoming. I'd say, I'm hoping uh staff can get that done in the next two or three weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Do we get that on the flash drive as well?
Yes.
It, it is two thousand twenty-one. You run a notebook.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about.
Just my opinion.
Yeah, no, and I'm not talking about no two or three. I'm talking like a two-inch or the senior car, you know, it'd always be, but I agree with you. I will provide that electronically as well, Dr. Uh, trustee La French.
Thank you.
No problem. Those are my, those are my comments, board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, one more opportunity to make any lasting comments or ask any questions for trustee, always kind of trustee La French. I'll go to you first this time. You're muted.
I am muted. I don't have any more comments. I just want to say that, you know, I am thankful for um the unity of our board and the unity of our um district. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee La French. Trustee Hunter?
Uh, no other comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Benz?
I, I concur with both of my fellow trustees.
Thank you. And lastly, I just want to say again, thank you, um, Adelanto Elementary School District, all departments, bus drivers, um, CNS staff, teachers, proctors, everyone. Thank you for making um our back-to-school successful and hopefully we can continue and all be better. So with that being said, I'll move on to section seventeen, adjournment. Can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by trustee La French. Is there a second?
A second, Hunter.
And a second by trustee Hunter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Ben, sign.
Trustee Hunter?
Hunter, I.
The French?
LaFrance, I.
Trustee Turner? And trustee Turner, I, motion pass four zero. The time is nine eleven PM. And just making it adjourned. Good night, everyone. I would say drive safe, but we're all on.
Good night.
Good night.